So with that, we're going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, November 19th. We begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with our pledge to our flag, and we're going to ask Supervisor Augustin. You'll please lead us.
Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, we will entertain the consent calendar. Are there any items on consent that any members of the board would like to have removed prior to adoption of the consent calendar?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. None? Okay. And any members of the public have any? I see you, Ellie. Hang on a sec. Anybody in Auburn have anything that they would like removed from consent? Nobody wants, what is it? There's some consent item on here, but I thought somebody for sure was going to pull and protest.
But maybe not.
Maybe not. I thought we were just going to have.
Maybe she's going to require you to slip on her.
All right. Seeing nobody in Auburn, Ms. Waller, do you have some item that you'd like us to remove for discussion?
Hi, Ellie Waller. For the record, yes, I'd like the First Amendment to Exclusive Rights to Negotiate a Developer Agreement related Pacific Companies, just for discussion.
Okay. Do you have an item number to help us zero in here?
Sixteen B.
Sixteen B.
Sixteen B Bravo?
Correct.
B Bravo.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, there being no other items, does anybody want to make a motion on the consent count?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. Holmes and second, Augustin, to approve remaining items on consent. We'll call, please.
Gore?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Augustin?
Yes.
You'll lead.
Aye. And with that action, our board has just appointed Karen Schwab as our county council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, will you send all these highly paid individuals back to work? Let's go ahead and take that item that was bold, that was sixteen B. Do we have staff that is prepared to speak to the item?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office. Today I have with me Eric Finley from Real Estate Services, who has supported our office in negotiating this agreement. So the request before you today is to take action to approve the First Amendment to the exclusive rights to negotiate agreement with related companies. The purpose of the agreement is to create a framework for ultimate development of the Nahas property site just east of Tahoe City for purposes of achievable housing, defined as affordability levels from thirty percent of average median income to up to over two-hundred percent based on TRPA's definitions. This affordability would also provide for missing middle, which is about in the middle of that, from eighty percent up to the nearly two-hundred percent. So the full spectrum of housing on that site. The extension would result in resulted, was a result of a change of approach from Placer County. Initially, we had proposed to have an extended period for the escrow, and we closed early, and we did not have time, as we had initially planned last fall when your board was asked to approve the exclusive rights and negotiate agreement, to come up with a project description that was ready for approval. We found it preferable to work with the community to have a better understanding on its preferences for options of developing that site. And so we have been working with the developer since a public meeting that was held in late July to develop additional options that we hope to discuss with an informal working group later this week, and then with the broader public early in December. So we've just taken a slightly different approach, which has led for the need to extend that agreement to a period in the end of May, and there is a potential to extend it further to next November, should both parties agree to do so. So with that, happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay. Board members, have any questions on the item? I don't see any members of the public want to address the board on this item. If you would, please identify yourself and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity today, Ellie Waller. For the record, I'm glad that there is a six-month and potential longer extension. I would like to suggest that when the public does get to attend meetings, that there are comprehensive staff and drawings provided, so we can provide meaningful comments when we arrive, not be shocked by what the proposals may or may not be. I would also like to suggest with the proposal of the roundabout as part of this process, that the Seven-Eleven and the Realty Company that are close by, adjacent neighbors, also be notified well in advance of the designs, so they see how those businesses are affected. Again, I'm glad that this is a six-month minimum extension. There is some issues, different perspectives and points of view from the public of how many units of each type of income, AMI, generated. So be prepared for some pushback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Good morning.
Rick Stevens, President of the Truckee Tahoe Airport Board, your fellow contributor to the acquisition of this project. And I support this extension because the discussions with the developer and the public that is being led by Supervisor Augustin needs to take place to create a plan that, as we said in our mutually agreed-upon letter, to include achievable housing through a mix of affordable workforce and missing middle housing inventory, which the current plan does not include. So please do approve of this extension. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none rising, any board members have any follow-up questions or comments? Supervisor Augustin?
I was just, for the record, wanting to say that I am in agreement with the six-month extension. There's a lot of work to do with the community, and I appreciate all the diligence of staff and the developers to take a step back and look at the comments they've received from the community. So confident we can come up with a program that can be, hopefully, acceptable to most.
Was that a motion?
And so I will move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion, Augustin. Second, Gore. Own favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments there in Tahoe. Appreciate it. All right. We will move on to public comment portion of our board meeting. This is when any member of the public can address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that board members cannot take action on items raised under public comment today. As you approach, please identify yourself and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Honorable Board. Mike Holmes, a voter in Auburn. I'm here today to advocate some help in getting, well, as we all know, tourism is a multimillion-dollar industry in Placer County, and we're always in need of more hotels of quality, and there's some suggested ways that we could encourage more of those to be built. One of those is the use of TOT money that's collected from hotels and other establishments. And there are a number of communities in California that already have ordinances that allow for this, so that a certain portion of the TOT money can be used to promote the new hotel and the area where they are and so forth. So among those that have had or currently have these programs, the city of Auburn used this when the Holiday Inn was developed in the 1990s. The city of Dublin, Los Angeles, Palm Springs, Cathedral City, Anaheim, Palm Desert, Garden Grove, Santa Barbara County, Escondido, and even in Aurora, Colorado, they have a program similar to this. So I'm urging that this board request staff to take a closer look at how this might work. One of the suggestions is that the funds could be given to, as an add-on to the Placer County Visitors Bureau budget to, so it has some oversight. It's not just given to the hotel, other venue. So anyway, I'd like to see staff come up with a proposal. I'll be happy to work with them if you think that's a useful thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else want to address the board on public comment? Yes, sir. Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Ken, Senator Tiempo. I'm a local contractor, and I'm here to talk about the power turnoff.
Okay. We're about to have an item, a little conversation about that, so why don't you hang on?
Okay.
We will be taking that actually as our next item.
Oh, great.
Yeah. So if you just hold on to those comments, we'll take them. Why don't you have a seat right there in the front row, and we will get right back to you. Yes, ma'am.
Before I start, I'd like to say, let's celebrate mandarins. This is Mandarin Month, and let's hope that our mandarins, our Mandarin producers and farmers are prosperous this year. I'd also like to wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving. While you guys are all enjoying your family with their turkey and everything else, I'll be enjoying the turkey shoot out at ATC. I'll really enjoy it, and I will think of you, and so will my family. I'm here to find out, as supervisors, and as called supervisors, I'm assuming that you are people that are there to supervise the staff that we, as county people, pay for. I really don't understand why, at this point, we are not getting, I'm not, that the, its code is not being enforced. I'd like to read to you, if you have not read the noise ordinance recently, I understand that it was produced in 2004 because of noises of motorboats, luxury motorboats, in Lake Tahoe and in Clementine. Here it is. I'm just going to read a short portion of it. The people of Placer County have right to and should be insured environment-free from unnecessary, offensive, and excessive sound and vibration that may jeopardize their health or welfare or safety, or degrade the quality of life. Mine has been degraded for three years. I'm not happy to be here. I don't like being here. I recently, as recommended by staff, do send a complaint regarding the seven-day-a-week shooting that I am exposed to over the decimal level that is outlined in this statement here. Now, I don't know if there's been many studies done on motorboat noise, but I can tell you that I distributed and sent to you a listing of the decimal levels and how they affect people. Have any of you been in the military? No. It is deafening. I go into, at four o'clock, I go catatonic now because I'm waiting for those noises to start. So I did submit a complaint. I got a canned response. After sending staff, why haven't I had a response? I got this canned response. Canned. I can't even read the signature. When I worked for county, if I had done this canned to respond to any of our farmers or producers, I'll tell you, I'd get a purple sticker. My department had liked using stickers and colored pens. I also got called in front of county council once because I didn't respond correctly to a complaint. Now, that's my three minutes. I guarantee you, I will be here every two weeks. I have a list of items of how I have not been respected by county. They are not enforcing their codes, and I am being exposed to it and not have a happy Thanksgiving. And I also want to say one more thing. During Red Flag Day, you can count on my lights being out, but you can count on those people at the trap club shooting.
Ma'am, I do need your name for the record.
Pardon me?
I need your name for the record.
My name is Nancy Jo Rixey.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else want to address?
Oh, I also have a statement from Wendy Buscher. She is a sixth, she has been a complainant, and I will send it to county. In fact, I'll send it to county council with a copy to all of you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir. Please go ahead and step forward.
Okay.
And hold one, hold one, hold one second.
My name?
Real quick. Hold one sec. And then, ma'am, you want, is there anybody else after that lady wants to speak? Okay. So we do have two more. All right. Yes, please. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to try to remain calm. My name's Stephen Stern. We retired here a year ago, bought an expensive home, live three miles from the trap club. I'm at my end. I can't take it anymore. I'm a lifelong shooter myself. I have a CCW. I'm a lifelong martial artist. I'm a badass. I'm not a wuss. This is driving me crazy and my family. We live on a family compound. If I hadn't just spent three-quarters of a million dollars of my hard-earned money, I'd move from here. It is ridiculous, and I have audio, I probably sent it to you people, of the boom, the explosions from my house. I can't go in my bathroom without hearing this. Our poor dog is nuts. Since March of last year, when this started, I hadn't heard anything until then. She's on medication. She won't eat. Her life is entirely different, and so is ours. Our four-year-old granddaughter, we all live together. The other day said, "What's that sound?" So I had to explain to her. We lived for thirty years in the middle of nowhere. I shot every day. So did my kids. Our neighbor was a district attorney that gave out the gun permits. He shot every day. Our other neighbor ran the class, highway patrolman. Wonderful people. They shot for ten minutes, it's over. It was not as loud. This noise is a hundred times louder. It is ridiculous. And if I didn't live with our daughter, son-in-law, and my wife, I would move. I would take the capital gains loss and get out of here, because this is nuts. As I say, I've had it. I'm at the end. You know, I thought of going over there with a sign saying, you know, plea, but it's going to be ugly, and I don't want, I don't want to hurt anybody. When we first moved to our area, one of the arts I practice is Filipino stick fighting, and I hit a bag. It sounds like a shotgun. I went to every neighbor with a business card, and I said, "I do this for fifty years. If it bothers you, here's my number. I will stop." That's how people live in this world properly. No one's ever called me, and I train most every day, and said, "You're too loud." But I would do that. These people don't care. You can use a quieter round. They don't. As I say, I have many audio recordings of the blast three miles away from every part of our house. I don't know what else to do. I'm just, I'm, I've had it. I'm sorry for venting, but I'm just, I'm crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Pamela Massey, and I'm here for the same issues that these last folks are. I unfortunately live much, much closer to the trap shoot than probably all these folks, because they're my neighbors. I love the trap shoot, and I love what they're for and what they represent. I've owned my house for the last ten years, and since this thing went in, I'll rewind. When it first, when I first got the notice in the mail, I expressed my concern to Mr. Dobbs, I think, and I had told, I think that was his name, and I told him, "Hey, I'm really concerned about the noise, and I'm concerned about what the wall is going to do and how it's going to reflect, and like, if there's, you know, if there's a cloud cover," or all these different environmental factors. And he assured me, he said, "We're concerned about that as well, and it shouldn't happen." He's like, "We've been assured up and down that any of these environmental factors will not affect it, and your quality of life, your family's quality of life, my husband, my son, my kids, my animals, everything, will not be affected." And then the wall goes in, and everything is horrible. All of my fears have been addressed or have been affirmed, and now we live in a nightmare. It is like the Fourth of July at my house every single day, and it's like you just, you cringe, and you wait for the, you know, the gun range to open, and at 10:00 a.m., it starts. I can't be in my house. It vibrates through my entire residence. And so I come to you guys because I was told that it wouldn't affect my quality of life, that it wouldn't affect us, and it is horrific. People have come out and done sound studies, and there's no doubt that, you know, the decimal levels have went up. And so I know that you've been working with us, and I know that people have heard us, but nothing's being done. We were told, just give it until summertime, because when summertime comes, when the ground dries out, then we'll start working on it. We'll try to fix it. And here it is, and summer's gone, and the rain's coming, and it has not been fixed. No tractors, no, no nothing has happened. And so now it's going to start raining, and I don't know how you guys are going to fix it. And so every single day, we live this way for something that you guys passed, and you told us that it wouldn't affect my quality of life. And it has, and it has affected so many people that are unfortunately not able to be here. I'm missing work in order to be here, and I'm lucky enough that I have a job that will allow me to do that, but some people are not. And so just because there's a small minority of us here doesn't mean that there's not a large majority out there that's being affected. And I really hope that you guys do something to fix this, because you gave us our assurance that you were going to, or that it wouldn't be a problem, and now it is. And so something has to be done, and if it's not done, then we have to do something else to fix the problem. So thank you guys for listening to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Yes, ma'am. After this, you know, what is done, we're going to close public comment and move on with our. Oh.
Thanks for the young part. I'm Joanne Hilton. I'm a resident of Lincoln, California. I'm on the board of the Downtown Lincoln Association. I'm also on the Economic Development Committee for the city and an interested volunteer. I'm concerned about the Bigford Marketplace, proposed rezoning for commercial. This would be about two and a half miles from our downtown, and it includes a proposal to a large, a very large gas station, a grocery outlet, et cetera. This commercial development is, requires a change of the general plan and a rezoning. And we, as downtown Lincoln residents, are really concerned that this will be an increase of the already big problem we have of sales tax leakage. It will not help our downtown. In fact, it will hurt it. Would like you to consider not allowing this rezoning to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Sir, you'll be the last one.
Good morning. My name is Mickey Donahue, and I live in North Auburn, and I'm here about the trap club as well. I agree with all three of these people here today. I agree with this gentleman, the price of my house. I am a gun advocate as well, and I don't want to move. I don't want to move from North Auburn. Our livelihood has directly been affected as well, and we've received no feedback, no support from the county whatsoever. It's very clear that the county has lost control of what's going on out there. There's no representation, there's no guidance, no support from the county regarding the trap club. There's been a lot of complaints about the sound wall going up and affecting people. The problem is not the sound wall. I've been here before. The problem is the county and the club. The club shoots seven days a week. That is unacceptable, period. They're, from what I've been told and what I've seen, their permit is for three days a week. Their historic hours are three days a week. They should be shooting three days a week. Their website says three days a week. It is insane, the shooting that is going on out there. There has been clear retaliation as well from the trap club. With all the complaints that have gone in, and them being aware of the complaints, the shots have gotten significantly louder, significantly more frequent, and they start earlier and they go later. It's very evident that that is what's going on. You try to reason with these people, and you can't. We've gotten zero support whatsoever. So again, something's got to be done with the club itself. If this was a winery, this would not be allowed. If this was a farm, this would not be allowed. I don't understand how a farm in Placer County that has been around for a hundred years has to pull a permit to have an event or a barbecue, but these people can have two-hundred people out there shooting guns, and there has to be no permit, no insight, no nothing. They can just go out and do whatever they want. And that's basically what we've been told by the county. That's basically what we've been told by the people at the club when we go and address this like good neighbors, like neighbors should. Hey, I've got a problem. This is what's going on. That's what's supposed to happen here, especially up in Auburn, especially in Placer County. That is not what's going on. They are rude, they're disrespectful, they're inconsiderate, and if it was a neighbor, it would be a little bit different, but this is a business. I feel that the county is intimidated because it's, has to do with guns and NRA and things like that, and that shouldn't be the case. Something has to be done. It's, again, the sound wall for me helps because I'm on the front side of the club, but now with the retaliation, it doesn't matter. It's so loud. It echoes and booms. It doesn't matter where you live, doesn't matter from the front side or the back side of the wall, it's loud. If it was addressed beforehand, if the county didn't ignore multiple complaints for multiple years, the sound wall would not have needed to be put in, and you would not be dealing with so much volume of complaints on the backside of the wall. It could have been addressed a long time ago. Thank you.
I'm sorry. So did we get your name?
Mickey Donahue.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right. Anybody up in Tahoe want to address the board on public comment? All right. Seeing none rising, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And under CEOs, excuse me, board member and CEO reports, first of all, any members of the board have anything to report? I will just point out that Supervisor Wigan is not here today because today the Board of Trustees for the California State University Systems meeting down in Long Beach, and as folks might be aware, one of the projects in Placer County that is working its way through the process consists of a 300-acre university site that we hope, if the project gets approved, might be a future location for, first, an expansion of Sacramento State University's offerings, and then its own separate California State University in Placer County. And Supervisor Wigan is down there to answer any questions the trustees might have, as this is just an informational item on their agenda today, and they will be looking to take action in March, after our board has a chance to take action on the project itself. So that's why Supervisor Wigan isn't here, and Supervisor Augustin, you have something?
I just, I wanted to report that Supervisor Holmes and I have had several meetings with the constituents on the Auburn Trap Club. I know staff is proceeding, and I hope to get an update on that soon so that we can answer these people's concerns.
And agendize it when appropriate.
Agendize it when it's appropriate.
Fantastic. Supervisor Board?
Please. Thank you. I just wanted to give an update. I had mentioned at a previous board meeting that we have a group of local elected officials, one representative from each of the local cities, and myself, who represent our jurisdictions on SECOG. We're meeting with our local elected, so we met with Assembly Member Kylie yesterday just to talk about asking the state to, or asking him to help advocate for more transportation dollars and discussing some of our challenges regarding transportation. In that conversation, we talked a little bit about the PSPS incidents, and I did mention to him the survey that the county is currently doing. And when we get those results, when that survey is closed, I would like to have those results made available to our state legislators so that they are very clearly aware of how it's affecting our residents, and he certainly wanted to hear that information.
Great. Thank you.
And then just a follow-up. As far as the trap club incident or the wall, I know that you all are working on this, and it was probably, what, back in March when we started hearing about this? Our staff needs to address this, and it's very frustrating having, and I know there are all the challenges with this, but this is one of those items where we need to jump on it and move more quickly than slowly as we hear from our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Having referenced the public safety power shut-off, I believe, Todd, you have Holly here to address the item?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Chair, board members. Holly Powers, our Assistant OES Director is here to give an update, kind of the current status of what we know at this point in time. Things have obviously evolved, but I'll turn over to Holly, and she can answer any questions you might have.
Good morning, Chair Uller, members of the board.
Holly, if you would, please, just after your presentation on this, let's go ahead and take your agenda item immediately after, okay?
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Chair Uller, members of the board. Holly Powers, your Assistant Director of Emergency Services. I'm here to give you a brief update on the status of public safety power shut-off number seven for Placer County this year. PG&E initiated contact with local governments over the weekend due to impending weather that may trigger PSPS, or Public Safety Power Shut-Off. Tomorrow, around that may trigger PSPS or Public Safety Power Shut-Off tomorrow around 7:00 AM. This is a change in time. It was originally 2:00 PM. Now it looks like power may be shut off around 7:00 AM tomorrow and extending into Thursday morning. Once the weather event has passed, which at this point is about Thursday, 7:00 AM, PG&E will start inspection of lines and restoration of power. PG&E will step restore circuits based on inspection, once they complete the inspection for damage. At this point, PG&E is planning to, trying to restore power within 24 hours of the all-clear. For the overall event, the public safety power shut-off will be affecting 26 counties and over 256,000 address points, which is just over 769,000 Californians. Placer County currently has 11,184 impacted address points included in this planned outage, which is about a little over 33,000 residents. Impacted areas include Forest Hill and then Auburn up the 80 corridor all the way to Donner Summit. I would like to note that Liberty Utilities does not have a PSPS planned at this time as snow is expected today and tomorrow. Limited county facilities will be impacted in this outage, the Blue Canyon Airport, fire station, libraries, couple memorial halls and traffic signals. PG&E is looking to open customer resource centers in Colfax, Forest Hill and Auburn. We're still waiting for verification on whether those have been put into place or not. County is working with PG&E to expedite some of those and ensure we get those customer resource centers put in place. The CRC sites will be heated for areas in colder locations. We'll have drinks, charging stations, non-perishable stacks and blankets. And the hours of operations will be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They expect that to start Wednesday through restoration, full restoration. A few changes by PG&E since our last events. They're no longer holding large conference calls. Instead, our local public safety specialist has been assigned as our single point of contact for all information for Butte, Yuba, Sierra, Nevada and Placer Counties. And all information will flow through this individual and this is someone we are very familiar with and have a good working relationship. The county EOC is currently not activated, however, OES is operating at a heightened duty officer status and have suspended all other projects to coordinate and monitor the situation. We will activate if necessary based on impacts as we see them. We will continue to send out our daily, our twice daily email updates and we, as we receive information from PG&E, which is about 8:30, 9:00 AM and then around 5:30, 6:00 PM. Additionally, a few, a few things that we're working on for this event, lessons learned from our previous events. We are working with Sherri Conway in Economic Development and County GIS to try and provide some preliminary analysis of business impact. This event is majority, the majority of this event is for residents, but we're really focusing on developing any processes we can for future events. We are also coordinating with county telecommunications to try and capture communication infrastructure that may be impacted. As a reminder, we do have little control over this as it's owned by private industry, but we will do our best to gather and share information as we can. Finally, County Communications, I think Wendy is here. Wendy and her staff will be staffing the public information line that will be available for residents to call for information and support. That number is 530-886-5310 and will be available from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The number will be published on our website, social media outlets and any other channels that we have available. As always, we encourage residents or anyone else to visit readyplacer.org, click on current emergencies and any links for PG&E information or Placer County specific information will be listed there and updated as we get that information. Any questions?
Any board members have any questions? Supervisor Gustafson?
Yes, I also received a text message from Glenn Ikadas who had been at the last board meeting. He said there's another one predicted for next Monday, potentially.
There is not, as far as directly from PG&E, they have not mentioned that there is another one for next week. However, we're all watching the weather forecast and do you see there's an increased wind event next week? But from our PG&E rep directly, at this point, there is not one planned or in the works, but that is all subject to change as we are very well aware.
I know you're not in charge of the weather, but I wanted to bring to the public's attention obviously and to others that this could be profoundly impactful over the Thanksgiving holiday, especially for businesses like Glenn's who thrive on that business and that's a huge portion of his sales for the fall.
Absolutely.
Is that Thanksgiving weekend, so he was expressing those concerns. I was up in Colfax last night. Mayor Joe has made all the news broadcasts, as you know, being willing to drive his truck and generator around to help people who are housebound to charge devices and things who may not be able to get down to the CRC. But we're really thrilled that a CRC will be there in Colfax. They were very grateful to the county's efforts in pushing that forward and I just, we've got to find solutions for the residents and the businesses in our communities. Got to keep pushing that agenda up to the state and the legislature to deal with this issue.
All right, any questions or comments from everybody in Tahoe and here in Auburn? All right, seeing none, why don't we go ahead on, oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Ken, Senator Tiempo. Yeah, so I don't really need to comment. I'm sure everybody's complained enough and live in, up in the Christian Valley area and no wind, but the power went off and so I wish I'd had questions, answers to why that is. But as a contractor, I'm aware, I went to the building department and asked them about how, what permit fees and what they require to hook up portable generators to people's homes. So, you know, we're causing a lot of running cords through your house, fire danger, you're running, people running cords through their home, hooking up to the generators that are, the cords are too small, fire hazard. So the proper way to hook up a portable generator is through a transfer switch through your breaker panel where the wire and the protection for the breaker switches are adequate. Nobody knows how to do this. Nobody knows that it can be done. People are running this and that and doing all sorts of crazy stuff. There's a proper way of doing it, relatively simple. The building department wants $300 for a permit, which is the basic, they said, electrical permit fee is $300. This is a simple fix. I'm requesting that during this time of power is getting turned off, that that $300 permit fee is eliminated. That way, that's something you can do, contractors that know how to do that can maybe let people know that this is dangerous, the way they're hooking up their portable generators. I can do it without the additional $300 permit fee. Like I said, it's a very relatively simple process to hook it up and do it properly where people are protected. I think this is something that you guys should address and suggest that it gets put out there that that fee is eliminated so people can just pull permits and make sure the building department comes out, make sure it's hooked up correctly, talking to the gentleman over there and going, yeah, what they're doing is how their people are hooking it up with their portable generators is very dangerous and also a fire hazard. And so I think that should get out there, reduce the permit fee, let them go to the building department, pull the permit, have them, you know, go through the permit process where the inspector comes out and make sure it's done correctly. I think that's something we can do here locally.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
All right. Seeing no other public comment on the public information item, let's go ahead and move to the agenda item. This is item 11A, 1 and 2.
Good morning again, Chair Uller, members of the board. Holly Powers, your Assistant Director of Emergency Services. I have before you two action items based on a allocation from the Governor's Office of Emergency Services to deal with public safety power shut-off resiliency activities. On October 25th of 2019, the state announced the Local Government Public Safety Power Shut-Off Resiliency Program to help mitigate the impact on Californians by supporting continuity of operations and efforts to protect public safety, health and commerce in the affected communities. $26 million has been granted to the counties and Placer County received an allocation of $452,333, subject to your board's approval. As a condition of receiving this funding, counties are required to collaborate with cities within the jurisdiction to support critical infrastructure and resiliency countywide with a particular focus on public safety, vulnerable communities and individuals with access and functional needs. Eligible activities under this allocation are limited to equipment such as generators, generator connection, fuel, fuel storage and redundant emergency communication plans such as continuity plans, development or update of contingency plans for extended power outages, risk assessments for critical infrastructure and lifelines and so on. Public education materials or supplies focused on individual and family preparedness for electric disruptions and one-time costs associated with identifying and equipping, and equipping resource centers for the public to access during electrical disruptions. Activities that are not eligible are response costs associated with the electrical disruption, including any staff time or overtime. Additionally, $10 million was made available to incorporated cities as a competitive grant. Those applications were due November 12th and I know for a fact that many of our cities have applied. We're waiting to get a designation from state OES as to when they will be awarding those grants to the cities because the requirement of the city grant is to coordinate with the county to leverage all funding received. Therefore, if the city of Colfax receives an allocated, an allocation through that competitive grant, we would weigh that in how we distribute the $400,000 that the county received. Therefore, our next steps will be to convene a stakeholder group with key county and city officials and representatives to develop a system for identifying and prioritizing projects based on the criteria listed and the total funding allocated to the county and cities. Our goal is to hold this first meeting by the end of the calendar year to start that process. I, I did forget to mention, forgot to mention that the performance period for the allocated funding, the county's allocated funding is July 1 of this year to October 31 of 2022. So at this time, I am asking for your board's vote on the requested actions.
Okay. We'll take these in two separate actions. First, we're being asked to approve the, well, I'm sorry, prior to that, any members of the public have any question or comment on what was just presented or any board members have any questions, a staff prior to the motion? All right, seeing none, let's move forward first with the agreement. What's the pleasure of the board?
I approve.
We have a motion, Holmes, and the second one was Gore. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Now on the budget amendment item.
Motion Gore.
Second, Holmes, roll call please.
Gore?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Uller? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will jump back in our agenda to our first timed item. Once a year, we have the opportunity to hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Garbino-Mojica, and this is our opportunity to do so for this year, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Just a little background, in 2005, Governor Schwarzenegger did not fully fund Proposition 98 as required on our California Constitution. What ensued was a lawsuit that resulted in the Williams settlement, which gave a great additional oversight to the county superintendent for schools at the time that were scoring in decile 1, 2 and 3 on the academic performance index. And those schools would be monitored for three years and have additional scrutiny by the county superintendent. Every three years, those schools would be rebenched and we would have new schools that would fall in decile 1, 2 and 3. So this is my annual report to the Board of Supervisors on those schools. However, I just want to point out that we haven't had the academic performance index accountability since 2014. So these are schools that were selected in 2012 and because we have a new accountability model in California, the California Dashboard, that dashboard is not aligned to the Williams settlement. So I'm actually providing you very old data and for that, do not shoot the messenger. We can know where we can, we can forward our frustrations to. So these are schools that were rebenched in 2012. We haven't had the opportunity to rebench in 2015 because of the suspension of our Public School Accountability Act back then, but we're still have the requirement to review them. So with that, we are basically looking for instruction, the sufficiency of instructional material at these two schools, making sure that the condition of the facilities are clean and safe, that the data that they report on their school accountability report card is accurate and making sure that teachers are appropriately assigned and hold the appropriate credentials to teach the classes that they teach. So with that, we have the, in the Auburn Union School District, the Rock Creek Elementary School, who in 2012 qualified as decile 1, 2 or 3, and the Woodbridge Fundamental School in the Roseville City School District. With that, I'd just like to report to you that both Rock Creek and Woodbridge have met all the findings and I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Any board members have any questions? Supervisor Gustafson?
Sure. You've made it down here, thank you for being here.
Oh, my pleasure.
And since the standards are old, how are the schools performing on today's standards?
So today's dashboard, we actually just released that data last week at our public board meeting for our Placer County Board of Education. And so we have a complete listing of all the school districts and their performance on our website. And so if the Board of Supervisors would like to have me back in the near future to talk about that, I'd be more than happy to get into more detail.
Thank you.
May I assume that our Superintendent of Public Instruction statewide, Tony Thurman, knows about this particular?
A lot of people, and I'm not a lawyer, so I do not know the difference between, I don't know how, how difficult and how technical it is to have a lawsuit settlement reference something that's no longer in law anymore. I don't know what happens then, but evidently it's a barrier.
But meanwhile, you still have to show up.
Meanwhile, I get to come here every November and
Give us, give us six-year-old data.
And I predict that I will be here next November as well, so.
Always nice to see you.
It's lovely to be here. Usually I'm sitting there, so standing on this side of the dais is a new thing for me, so.
And, and given the time of year you normally show up, maybe next time, come with a good recipe that you like for Thanksgiving, something.
For some reason, it has to be every November I have to come in. So that's something we could, we could, we could exchange stuffing recipes.
Yeah, exactly.
More than happy to.
Any board members have any other questions on the lunacy that she has to deal with? I mean, the report that she's given us?
It's never boring in public education in California.
Okay. Anybody in Tahoe, anything? All right, thank you very much, Gail. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Gail.
Okay. We are on our 9/20 timed item. This is our short-term rental ordinance adoption as well as the rental permit fee adoption, both items. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil with the Placer County Planning Services Division. I have a very brief presentation for you this morning. This morning, we are presenting the adoption of the short-term vacation rental ordinance. This was previously presented at the November 5th hearing. Noting that this was previously presented, I did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation. And I would also note that as this program rolls out, if adopted today, we do anticipate to return to your board for any adjustments that need to be made, including establishing a different inspection timeframe for the property managed short-term rentals. So for the life-fire inspections, right now, we're proposing once every three years. We anticipate to come back and adjust that to once every five years specifically for the STRs that are managed by a professionally licensed property management company. If you have any questions about the ordinance itself, I am happy to answer those questions. Otherwise, I am prepared to make a recommendation that you adopt the ordinance and find it exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And I would also note that Tim Wagner is here to discuss the fee program after the conclusion of this adoption. Thank you.
All right. Board members have any questions? Seeing none, any members of the public here in Auburn or in Tahoe?
Good morning, Ellie Waller, for the record. In addition to all the other permit requirements, it might be appropriate to cut, get into the weeds on the maximum number of cars allowed on-site based on the occupancies that have been agreed to, to assist in the enforcement, so there isn't any debate. It, it should be required in the permit, how many cars can be at a certain site? And has a process been decided, defined? When a neighbor chooses to call the sheriff for excessive noise, how does that complaint get registered against the STR? Does it go to host compliance or somebody in the county? And the same could be said for the fire department being called for open pits or anything related to fire issues. How again does that get into the Placer County database for enforcement status? And then also bedroom definition probably needs a little more specificity. There's lots out on the web about what constitutes a bedroom in California. It's defined in section code 310, but just stating a window, I do not believe is good enough. That window needs to be able to get a person out of it, can't just be a bathroom-sized window. So So when we are looking at starting this process, we want to get ahead of the game and make sure we're not going back. I believe that STRs have existed for a long time. Again, we've beat this to death about Airbnb and how the onslaught of our neighborhoods are being overtaken, but we do need to do this right the first time, so we make the process appropriate for both the STR owner and the community that needs to protect and enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wanted, yes, sir?
William Waters, from Auburn, lifetime...
Sorry, your name again?
William Waters, from Auburn, Clipper Gap area, lifetime Placer County resident and a contractor. I second all these worries about these units, and I don't think any of these should be glorified even in the rural areas here, and I want this extended to the whole county. The supervisors are allowing, you've already taken away our rights to protest anything just happening on our private roads that we maintain for the wineries, et cetera. So these event centers, these party houses and so forth in the rural areas, every one of them is taking away a rental, then generally, the low-budget rentals, the second dwelling units. There's people wanting to build second dwelling units just to turn them into little motels. So these people, our neighbors, are turning our residences and our rural areas into these wineries and event centers. So your winery and event center thing is coming up. I want all short-term rentals in the whole county put under this hotline, because if it's a rental, you need to have it posted so that people who are turning homes into businesses are taxed and everybody is notified, and notified where to complain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else want to address the board on this item? Pardo's taking action. Okay, seeing none, the request is the adoption of the ordinance along with the associated sequoia exemption finding. What's the pleasure, yes?
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Clarification. So the question that came up in regards to calls about, to the fire and the sheriff's departments, how will those actually get registered with host compliance, so we know that there's a process there?
Certainly. Good morning, Tim Wagner, Deputy Director, and Cedra. Supervisor Gore, really appreciate that question, and I can address a few of the comments that were made here today. You know, what we're doing is working with Placer County Sheriff's Office Dispatch, really, to have them, if they receive those calls, to, A, notify the individual that they can contact host compliance as well. We certainly do want our sheriff and our fire departments to be engaged if it's a matter that they should be handling. So we do see that we, folks should be using their 911 systems as they would, or their non-emergency lines as they might, and we're hoping that the dispatch will accommodate us as well to direct people as well to the host compliance system. In reference to the bedroom windows and so forth, I just want to be clear about that. It specifically does say an opening that can be used for emergency egress, and that's a specific, emergency egress is a specifically defined item within the building code, so there are minimum dimensions that it has to meet and an openable area for those reasons. For A, not only people to exit through that, but also for fire personnel, emergency personnel to enter in through those same windows. So those provisions are there today, and we feel comfortable, as written.
All right. Okay, with that, what's the pleasure of the board on the ordinance and the sequoia exemption finding?
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Motion Gustafson, second. Gore, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. And the short-term rental permit fee adoption.
Well, good morning again, Chairman Euler, members of the board, Tim Wagner, Cedra. Just wanted to review what Cedra's recommending for our STR fee schedule, and so the purpose of this today, we're going to be requesting that your board conduct a public hearing to consider adoption, adoption of a resolution establishing the short-term vacation rental permit fee schedule, and to further direct staff to negotiate a memoranda of understanding to provide periodic fire safety inspections for short-term vacation rentals with fire districts in eastern Placer County and return to the board for consideration. And so in general, just wanted to share with your board today that we have been working with the fire districts. We ourselves and Cedra have been deriving what our total cost might look like to administer the program. In general, looks like our STR program from a county perspective is going to range, right now, we're estimating $455,620,000. Primarily, primarily, I say that, about 50% of those costs are really directed towards code compliance or code enforcement positions, so that's a portion of our supervising officer. There's a code compliance officer that's designated, and then we have funds that are allocated for a consultant. And in particular, what we're trying to cover is the seven-day-a-week opportunity that might occur up there, and then as well, to make sure that we're handling those specific days around holidays and areas when we know folks just generally ramp up, and so, you know, spring break and things of that event. So we've calendered those, and we think our costs are directly going to cover those. As far as fire safety inspections, again, we've received information from the fire districts, you know, based on Cal OES 2019 salary survey and the idea of two hours for fire inspections. As you heard earlier, we do intend to come back to your board at some point coming forward with a discussion about the three-year and five-year duration and cycle on that, as well as the opportunity for fire districts to do more periodic inspections as they deem necessary. And in that, we might hear fire districts have interest in folding in defensible space and some other items of that, and we'll certainly work through that memoranda with these districts to consider all those facets. In general, both Cedra and the fire department's adjusted fees for property managed and non-property managed look a bit like this, and we really were driving our experience to discern the difference between the two. For application fees, we're looking about $105 for property managed and $179 for non-property managed. Fire inspection fees are $95.18 for property managed and $158.13 for non-property managed. For total fees, in the property managed, $200.18, and the non-property managed, $337.13, and we're finding there's about a 60% difference between those two, so just want to make you aware of that. You know, really, other things to note, we anticipate adjusting costs and fees next year as we all understand what our actual costs are. You know, we're estimating based upon what our experience is and what other communities' experiences are in our current complaint volume. And then the STR ordinance also states that fire inspections, again, as I mentioned, are every three years, and we'll work through that matters as it moves forward. So with that, again, I just request your board to conduct a public hearing and give staff some direction.
All right. Board members, have any questions? Supervisor Gustafson?
Yeah, I, we did receive some comments this morning from North Star, and I just wanted to make sure that you, and you just stated it, but I want to make sure it's clear on the record, that we can negotiate in the MOU to address the concerns about defensible space inspections as well?
Yes, that's our intent, is to have those discussions with the district.
I just want to make sure that's on the record, that their comments have been responded to. Thank you.
And Supervisor Gore?
Thank you for the presentation, and glad to be where we're at. And far be it from me to question how much time it takes to do a fire inspection. Two hours seems like a lot of time to do a fire inspection on a single home. Maybe that includes a travel time, but I'm, you know, you're working with our fire partners, but at the same time, as we address these issues, I want to make sure we're actually addressing the real costs and not utilizing this as an opportunity to just make more money off of local residents. So I'm, I know it's here, but as we're, as we work through the permitting costs after this next year, I just, I'm making the comment that two hours just seems like a lot of time to check out a home for fire safety.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Gore. That's duly noted, and as we do go through this next year, we anticipate having those discussions with the fire district about what our costs look like and what their costs like, look like in the real time on the ground.
Yeah, and Supervisor Gustafson and I had a chance to meet with Chief Schwartz up in Tahoe about a month ago. This topic came up, and the two hours not only includes the travel time, as you alluded, but also the staff time in the office when they receive the phone calls, schedule the inspection, all that. They're estimating right now that between the office time, scheduling the inspection, the paperwork, the travel, the inspection itself, they're looking at two hours, and they're, they're more than happy to track and evaluate that and adjust accordingly.
Terrific, and I appreciate that clarification. It's very helpful. Yeah. Recognizing that so many of the property owners do not live in the area, so coordinating time to be on-site to gain access and do the inspection may take some time, so appreciate that.
All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Any members of the public here in Auburn wish to address the board? And in Tahoe?
Hi, Ellie Waller, for the record. I just want to add one more thing to the list for the fire department. Aren't you down the street? I was the only full-time owner of 13 houses, three fire hydrants. I cleared those fire hydrants as a voluntary program. The fire department is very busy doing other things. I think we need to assess getting those if they're in a neighborhood that is mostly STRs. There needs to be some responsibility to get those fire hydrants cleared also. When they're covered with snow, either by a private company or the county, you don't want the fire department wasting 20 minutes trying to get a fire out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, and I wanted to just, Supervisor Gore's inquiry. So we do have a little experience, North Tahoe Fire specifically, has been doing inspections within El Dorado. We have a portion of our district, our service area, that covers El Dorado County, so this is built, based on partially what we've done in the past as far as doing inspections in the short-term rentals with El Dorado, but also on our experience with doing business license inspections, which I think most agencies do for years, and we're pretty comfortable with the numbers. I will, I will comment that first, that you'll see a little variation, I think, between district and district, and I think we'll true the costs up in the next year round, you know, if it's less expensive or more. It is based on actual cost recovery, not on just an average. Any questions? Otherwise, thank you.
No, thank you.
And we support the ordinance.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, chief, would you mind reapproaching? We didn't get your, we didn't get your name on the record. Need your name on the record, please.
Oh, Michael Schwartz, Fire Chief for North Tahoe Fire Protection District. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing none, others rising in Tahoe nor in Auburn, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this item back to our board. What is the preference of the board?
I'll move approval of the fee adoption.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments under the motion?
I did want to make a quick comment, that staff has moved expeditiously, our partners in the fire districts have moved expeditiously to, to address this situation, and I just really appreciate the time and dedication it's taken to get this forward this quickly. So thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we have our motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. All right, thank you so much. We will move on to our 9:30 timed item. This is a presentation of the California State Association of Counties' Eagle Award. Somebody did all 21 mayor badges and their project, it sounds like, in order to get their Eagle Award.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Euler, members of the board, Todd and Karen, congratulations, by the way. Jim Cody, Assistant Risk Manager, County Executive Office with the Risk Management Division. It is a pleasure to be before your board, and I am proud to be here on behalf of the Risk Management Team. This morning, I would like to invite our team up to accept the 2019 Eagle Award Exemplary Achievement in Government Leadership and Enrichment from our Joint Powers Excess Insurance Authority. With us today, Nicole Ardom, who submitted the application, Kristin Morancy, our new member of our team in Risk Management, Mary DiArco, and Terry Buttrell. It is my pleasure to introduce Rick Brush, Chief Member Service Officer with CSAC EIA, to present the award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, thank you very much. Chair Euler and members of the board, thank you very much for putting time on the agenda today for this. It's truly an honor to be able to celebrate success, and that's why I'm here today. It's wonderful. You guys do a tremendous amount of hard work. Your staff works very hard, and I'm very honored to be able to make this presentation. My name is Rick Brush. I'm the Chief Member Services Officer for the CSAC EIA. EIA stands for the Excess Insurance Authority. We are different from CSAC. What we do is we provide for your county property liability, medical malpractice, excess workers' comp insurance, dental, vision, EAP services, watercraft, airport, and more. We do this for over 2,000 public agencies throughout the state, so we're a very large organization. One of the things that we did is, three years ago, started this Eagle Awards, and as Jim said, that stands for the Exemplary Achievement in Government Leadership and Enrichment. Really, the reason we started this is we have so many members that are doing a tremendous job, just like your Risk Management Team here. What they've done is they've put together a program for a certificate of insurance tracking that makes sure that nothing slips through the cracks. When this program started, it was back in 2009, and they were doing about 500 contracts a year. Now they're doing over 1,000 contracts every year, so as you can imagine, a very large task of making sure that nothing slips through the cracks. And in the area of risk management, this is a huge achievement, and what we want to be able to do is recognize that here in front of all of you, show the great achievement of your staff, and then beyond that, what we do is we get to share this best practice to over the 2,000 other public agents that we have. So on behalf of the CSAC EIA, I do want to present this to Nicole and to Jim Cody and your Full Risk Management Team. They've truly done a fantastic job, and I feel very fortunate that I can share this honor with all of you. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much for being here this morning and making this presentation. We appreciate the recognition. Supervisor Holmes, you have something you want to?
Well, I just wondered, that's a very nice award there. It's a kind of a bowl, is that what it is? Do you have any plans to put anything in?
Some mandarins, you think, might go good in there?
I thought, yes, since it's mandarin season, Placer County's...
It won't be an ashtray, if that's what you want.
So let me present these.
Oh, look, he's going to put some mandarins in there for you. That's wonderful.
There you go. Hold it. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Supervisor. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to ask you to turn around. We've got our photographer back there to take a picture, recognition of this award. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll continue with our 9:45 timed item. This is our fiscal year 1920 work plan and progress report on strategic initiatives.
Board members, we have Jane Christensen with us, and as I've kind of talked with you over the last year or two, we've really talked about kind of keeping you updated about projects and initiatives that we're doing organization-wide. This is really an opportunity to give you a quick recap of kind of where we're at and kind of a status update. We'll walk through these slides relatively briefly, but I'll turn over to Jane, and she can talk through some of the specifics.
I don't know that you've got to push a little button there. There you go.
Good morning, Chair Euler, members of the board. Great to be here today to share our progress report on the strategic plan and the critical success factors that, as Todd said, you all outlined in your strategic plan process in April of 2018. As you'll see, we've done before, we've got a quick run-through of the strategic initiatives, each with a status report that denotes completed, scheduled for future board action, a work in progress, or under consideration, to give you a sense of our progress to date on these many initiatives. The first critical success factor, strategic relationships and community engagement. In this area, we have quite a few milestones to report. As you know, we redesigned the county website for residence transparency and convenience earlier this year. We continue to enhance our legislative advocacy, and we are actually scheduled to meet with the board at a special meeting on December 10th to review our 2020 legislative platform. And as many of you know, we have been... And as many of you know, we have been well underway for several months now with the Charter Review Committee. Supervisor Gustafson was kind enough to join us up in Tahoe on Friday, together with Chief Schwartz, and we've got future meetings scheduled with other supervisors in mid-placer and South Placer in early December. Other areas that you heard about earlier today, enhancing regional coordination under Holly Powers' leadership. We have certainly done a lot in working with area agencies throughout the county, not only for winter and storm season preparedness, but for the recent PSPS events. For those of us who were relocated due to power outages to the EOC earlier this year, it was quite impressive to see her operation, the roll call of agencies, and how they keep track of everyone and how they're doing throughout these PSPS events. Another area that the board approved in May is to begin the 2-on-1 services that we will be doing under contract with Nevada County. Those services are due to get underway in spring of 2020. This is a service that many residents, as you know, have long advocated for. Another critical success factor is in the area of achievable housing. And here, too, we have quite a few progress reports to share. As you know, we implemented the Housing Work Plan with board approval in August of this year and a housing element contract before the board for future work on this, this very month. We're in the midst of proposing policy and ordinance amendments. We went out with a project description and the notice of project in late 2019, and we expect fall, the fall EIR and other approval hearings next year. We also brought the board in August the financial investment strategy for achievable housing, resulting in board approval of $500,000 for the Housing Trust Fund, a real milestone in moving the needle on affordable housing. Also, up in Tahoe, the Nahas property purchase last month with a project concept public meeting before our residents in that area next month. Another critical success factor, collaborative health and human services. This was one of the top three areas that the board discussed in your pre-budget workshop last week. In this area, we've done much to move the ball down the field with regard to state funding and partnerships in the area of reducing homelessness, seeking organized service delivery plans with regard to medical expansion, billing the feds for some of our costs as we were allowed to do beginning in July. We hope to present metrics to the board in early 2020, as well as expanding pet licensure going online and improving revenues 4% in July of this year. In the area of continuum of care, we, this month, increasing our emergency foster care capacity through a regional collaboration of Northern California counties via a pilot program with the state. Public serving infrastructure and amenities is another area that the board highlighted at the pre-budget workshop last week. In this area, you've saw in June the Parks and Trails Master Plan, which will be before you for further consideration in fourth quarter of 2020. As you know, the work for Placer Parkway is underway with the right-of-way phase and partner reimbursement agreements, and we anticipate construction to start in 2021. On the PCGC Master Plan, the board made great strides, actually early this month, November 5th, when you approved a strategy for the HHS building, one of the signature developments of that PCGC Master Plan. Also, in November, you updated the capital facility improvement plan with your board-approved action, not only on HHS, but on the Crime Lab and the Tahoe Justice Center priority projects. Other areas where we've been improving public infrastructure were embedded in the fiscal 1920 budget with additional funding for capital maintenance, major maintenance rehab, meaning preserving what we have, and additional funding for facilities and infrastructure projects. As you know, in August, you approved the library strategic plan, so they have their path going forward. And again, I think the board has done quite a lot of work with the Board Capital Workshop in March of 2019 and your approval of facility priorities just earlier this month. Another critical success factor is in the area of economic development strategies. As the board is aware, the Placer Business Resource Center continues to expand serving clients with just a few milestone achievements noted here, as well as expanded programs in the Tahoe Basin. Many of you were present in Roseville when we kicked off the strategy in September to target business retention in our area, particularly those with primary jobs. And the disposition and redevelopment of the former redevelopment properties is ongoing, with PSAs executed this year and last year, and two remaining properties now listed through June of 2020. In the area of tourism master plan funding, as you know, we're under a contract for the marketing services with North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, and T-Bid development is ongoing. I understand they have had some promising discussions, and we are looking forward to the management plan in early 2020 so that we, as a county, could administer what the T-Bid group puts forward and get that program underway in 2020. Other eastern Placer initiatives are noted here, including small business outreach and counseling, and additional bus resources for park and ride lots and additional bus service, a key issue up in eastern Placer County. Prudent, all-inclusive financial planning is another area that the board chose to focus on over the last year, and we've got some milestones here to present as well. Develop enhanced quarterly budget reports. We're starting that in fiscal 1920, and I believe that follows my presentation directly. And again, we've made great strides in planning more responsibly for five-year capital needs over the course of this budget and going forward with the board's approval. We continue to identify opportunities to manage pension and retirement benefits cost. This is an item that I highlighted for the board in June. Because of your forethought and action, we are 91% fully funded on our OPEP needs, which is really remarkable, given agencies throughout the state. We continue to assess that internally, and certainly just last week at your pre-budget workshop, you assessed county fund health and reserve levels so that we can continue to do well in meeting these requirements. Public safety is yet another area that the board highlighted. In fact, is its number-one priority for the county, reiterated in the pre-budget workshop last week. In this area of prime importance is fire services sustainability. Certainly, Supervisors Gustafson and Holmes serve on the Ad-Hoc Committee, and we will see December 3rd in two weeks, the Standards of Coverage Study, which will address our response times as well as our capabilities, and will be another step forward in determining those fair share funding requirements to make sure we are, in fact, evolving a sustainable approach to this critical public safety service. Body camera technologies are currently under review by the Placer County Sheriff's Office. As you know, this is an issue very much in the news. And we are doing much, or continuing to do, work on improving services for crime victims and continuing to implement the state changes with regard to public safety services. In the area of mental health, we've, the board's noticed, I'm sorry, the board awarded the Auburn jail construction earlier this year, and we are waiting for state funding with regard to the South Placer Acute Mental Health Unit. In terms of other safety needs, again, capital is an area where I think the board has made some great strides, from the March Capital Workshop to the corner groundbreaking in June, and your decisions earlier this month, again, on the Crime Lab and then Tahoe Justice Last but not least, when it comes to innovation, this, again, is an area the board emphasized in the pre-budget workshop last week. How are we leveraging the power of technology to improve services, improve efficiencies, and improve the quality of life for our Placer residents? Internally, we completed implementation of Workday last year for financials in July of this year with the HR modules for the Workday program. We continue to enhance self-service options via our online platforms with that new website. If Amazon can do it, I think many of our residents ask, "Why can't you too?", and we're working to do just that. Just in September, we implemented a new online employee training program. Rather than people taking time away from work and going away to meet their training requirements, they can do it all online in a much more seamless, cost-effective way. An area that the board does need to consider going forward is criminal justice data sharing. The board did remarkable work with the 2015 Criminal Justice Master Plan, which extended 2015 through 2018. The time is now to revisit a better, more integrated system approach so we can manage those costs more responsibly going forward. We are looking, over the current fiscal year, at automated agenda processing. You heard earlier this month about our IDEA Accelerator success. We launched the program in July, over 60 proposals and 10 projects funded and now underway, which we report, look forward to reporting back to the board in spring of this year. And cloud technologies are revolutionizing a lot of our operations across the county in moving away from those big server rooms to the cloud, saving time, money, space, and all things that, again, overall lead to more efficiencies. So pursuant to the board's comments, we are doing a lot. We continue to do a lot with regard to, again, leveraging that technology for more efficient Last but not least, land use planning and environmental stewardship is another area of emphasis to the board. There are many things going on in this area. I'm sorry Supervisor Weigant isn't here, because at long last, we reached the milestone of federal register listing for the PCCP and hope to see that moving forward independent of county advocacy going forward. The Sustainability Plan goes to the Planning Commission next month, and Regional University moves forward with its specific plan approved by the board in May of 2019. Sunset Area Plan and Placer Ranch is going to Planning Commission, actually later this week, and will be before the board at that special meeting on December 10th. Vicford Ranch and Riolo also continue to move forward. Sustainable Groundwater Management Act will be before the board in January of 2020. Winery and Brewery Ordinance will also be, have its public hearings in early 2020 as well. To Steve Pedretti's credit, we continue to move the needle forward on zoning ordinance and updates for greater efficiency in our permit process. You just approved the short-term rental ordinance, which will be a big boon to folks up in Tahoe, and continue to do ordinance cleanup across the CEDRA organization in 2020. Other land use development process improvements, many of these you've heard about, from online permits to the chatbot deployment, automated building inspection route, I'm sorry, building inspection routing, electronic submittal, and continuing cross-training to improve staff efficiencies and workflow when it comes to permit processing. In the Tahoe area, a number of initiatives are noted here. We certainly are well aware of ongoing work among those Tahoe-based departments, CEO, Public Works, CEDRA, and facilities to advance plan objectives and improve services for our residents in the Tahoe region. So with that, in summary, the board has done much to advance this work over the last year. We look forward to continued progress and reporting out on our progress in 2020. So with that, thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Very, very thorough, very comprehensive. Thank you very much. Supervisor Gore.
Thank you, Jane. And obviously, staff's been working very hard, which is terrific. A lot of good things have happened this last year. Couple of questions first. So this was the, was this the 2019-2020 work plan or 2019?
This was the strategic plan that was approved in 2018. We provide periodic updates to the board. I believe the last one, the last expanded report was in March of this year, which kind of put the marker down for 1819. This is the first of the 1920 reports that you will expect to see on a periodic basis hereafter.
And so some of the success factors or the actions that you'll take, these, they will be updated, correct?
Correct.
Different items that are important, you'll update the strategic plan?
Certainly.
And so just saying that, a couple of things that, since we're just sitting here, I'm really glad to see that we're revisiting, making our board agendas and all that information more of an online process for approvals for staff, streamlining that process, and actually having a better process where instead of me having to download every item online and wait for it or have a hard copy, we have a better process there. I'm looking forward to that. And I've shared this, just a couple of things in our area, and that is, as we are doing a lot more building in communities, for example, Placer Vineyards, communication to our residents, I think, is really important, as we're doing a lot of projects. I think our residents who aren't used to development need to be aware of what's, what's coming down the pike, and I'm certainly committed to doing that in my district. But sharing that that's, I think, important for us, as we're a county that wants to be transparent and communicating with our residents. And then I'll be advocating that we move up baseline road improvements in the future instead of waiting for many years down the line. I want to make sure we're talking about that in the future as well. So a couple of my, now that we have the opportunity to talk about it, I'm sharing. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gore. Any other comments, board members? I don't see any at this time. How about the public? Any members of the public want to address the board on the presentation that we just received? And seeing none, this was just a, an opportunity to receive the report and hear what we've been working on in our strategic areas. We thank you very much for the report. Like I said, very comprehensive. Thank you.
And just to wrap up, one thank you, Jane. You did a great job. This information's also going to be available online. I know we've been to a couple Macs, and I know people have interest on what we're doing in terms of projects. We'll have a status update at the board's, board supervisors on their website. We'll be able to provide this information. So keep everybody abreast of what's going on, because there are a lot of ideas and activity and a lot of great projects that we're working on right now. So just wanted to share with that. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. And on the topic of our prudent, all-inclusive financial planning, we'll take up our 10:05 timed item. This is our fiscal year 1920 quarterly budget update.
Good morning, Chair Euler, members of the board. Daniel Chatney, your County Budget Officer. The item before you this morning is a presentation about our Quarter One of Fiscal Year 2019 Quarterly Budget Status Report. The fiscal year 2019-20 budget was adopted by your board on September 24th, 2019, so just a short while ago. And to support fiscal transparency and timely financial information sharing, the CEO's office has developed this quarterly financial status report for your review. The first chart that you were going to review is an overview of the county financial position. This is a chart of all county funds collectively, and you can see on this chart that we're generally on par with the prior year, with no major differences in revenues or expenditures. I just want to point out here that the general reserves are at 7.7% of the general fund. That includes the general fund amount, including all transfers to all the other major operating funds. Without that number, we'd be closer to about 17%. I will note on this one, on the non-capital expenditures, 192 million versus 173 for the prior year. Most of that is due to the addition of one extra payroll period in the first quarter of this fiscal year compared to last year. The second chart we're going to review is the general fund. And of note, there are two items that are with a highlight, A and B, on the expenditure side. And the $10 million variance between fiscal year 1819 and 1920 in the first quarter reflects several pay periods in the first quarter of last year that were charged for Health and Human Services that were charged to the general fund. And then after the first quarter, those were corrected and then charged to Health and Human Services. And again, the additional payroll period. There was also a transfer of funds to the PARs Reserve, and then that is also recognized in the fiscal year 1920 salary and benefits number. In the other charges in this category, $6.2 million of Health and Human Services costs, again, were charged to the general fund in the first quarter, and those were subsequently moved in a later period during the last fiscal year, and that would represent the $6,46,000 difference there. On the library fund, not much to discuss on this one. Everything seems to be on par with the prior year, with the exception, again, of the one additional pay period in this fiscal year, and $18,000 of intergovernmental revenue from the state of California that has not been recognized yet in this fiscal year. On the public safety fund, on the revenue side, you'll see a difference in intergovernmental of $7.4 million. That has to do with the Prop 172 tax and the recordation of a, the 1819 actuals in 1920. And once that number is reversed out, I'm sorry, the number in 1819 in first quarter was not reversed out. It has been in this fiscal year already in quarter one, so that would explain the higher revenue in 1819. And on the expenditure side, again, the salary and benefits look higher in 1920, mostly due, again, to the additional payroll period.
Just real quick, before we move off public safety, the capital being Just real quick before we move off public safety, the capital being 20% on expenditures, 23% ahead of budget, is that the helicopter?
Yes, that is correct.
Right.
Okay. And on the Health and Human Services Fund, again, the, the notes here, we have an extra A identified under the, on, on the revenue side of this chart. But on the expenditure side, again, it's related to the payroll period, the payroll processing that occurred against the general fund in quarter one of 1819 and the extra pay period in 1920. And then the other charges, uses category, again, is the, the $6.2 million that went to the general fund in first quarter that was corrected back to the HHS fund in a later period.
Okay.
On the fire fund, we just have a couple notes here. This is recognizing prior year revenue accruals that have not yet been canceled out in 1920. And on the expense side, again, we're seeing accruals that were posted but not yet reversed out in current fiscal year. So those are showing as negative revenues, which will correct once the, the receipt of those revenues from 1819 are recorded. And I do want to mention in your packet, there's a reference to Amador costs that we're posting. And I just want to point out that that is the Amador Plan, which is a service that we have through Cal, our Cal Fire Contract where we staff fire stations as 12 months out of the year and year-round coverage versus not an Amador County reference. And with that, I hope that gives you a high-level picture of what has transpired so far in fiscal year 1920. I expect that the quarter two report that will come before you later in the year will be more robust with more revenue recognition and expenditure transactions. That will give you a better picture of kind of where we're headed throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. And with that, I would entertain any questions the board has.
Technically, the Q2 report will be in next year when it comes to us, not later this year. But actually, that goes straight to the question I was going to ask. So we are going off of the state fiscal, this goes to the conversation we're having, we're going, when we, when we report our Q1, it's off of state fiscal as opposed to federal fiscal, obviously, because we're still in Q1 of federal. How long does it take us to close out on a month-to-month basis?
Generally, our, through the auditor's office, the, the month-to-month close happens fairly quickly. I mean, they are closing to us to new transactions at the immediate close of the, the calendar month.
Right.
So generally, within a few weeks after.
Okay. Are these numbers that if they are not already made available publicly, that we can track on an annual basis somewhere on our website? Is that something that we can do?
Of course, yes.
And as we close a month, we update that month and then, then do a quarter? I very much like this quarterly review, but if, if we could be looking at these on a monthly basis as the month's closed, that'd be very helpful. That'd be great. Thank you very much. Any other board members have any other comments or questions? Any members of the public? All right, seeing none, this was just our update with no action necessary. Daniel, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Very helpful. All right, we'll move on to department items. First department item is going to be a SEDRA item. This is in regard to adopting a 2019 Building Standards Code. Here in November of 2019, we'll adopt the 2019 Building Standards Code.
Well, good morning again Chairman Yuler, members of the board, Tim Wagner, Deputy Director Reverend SEDRA. I'm also your Chief Building Official here in Placer County. I just wanted to, the opportunity today to present to you our triennial adoption of the 2019 California Building Standards Codes. And so I don't have a lot for you today. I am going to ask you to repeal the current Chapter 15, Article 1504 in its entirety, adopt the 2019 California Building Standards Code as amended, supported by the findings set forth in Section 2 of the attached ordinance, and to finally codify the adoption of the 2019 California Building Standard as amended by adoption of the Placer County Code, Chapter 15, Article 1504, set forth in Exhibit 1 of the ordinance. But generally, there are really only three items I wanted to bring to your board today. Staff is recommending the adoption of two appendices which are not adopted with the body of the code. Your board would have to specifically allow for that adoption. And what we're asking for is the Appendix C, which is really relating to agricultural buildings. And it really mirrors and mimics what the county has had in practice for quite some time. If you're not aware, what our agricultural exemption process looks like today is if you're on 10 acres or greater, you have a bona fide agricultural business, what we're trying to do is facilitate those businesses. So we don't want to get in the way of farmers and other ag adventures where they need to build things like milking barns and shade structures for their equipment or for their, their cattle and things to that effect. So let's just try to get out of the way of that and allow them to move ahead. Simply all we do is ask for a setback inspection. What this appendix does is just give us some more detail about size, height, and those things through the application process that our current ordinance doesn't have. But all the other elements are the same, the type of use and so forth. So really just again underpinning what we're currently doing. And the other item is Appendix J. And really, that's just to fill the gap, if you will, between our engineering surveying department, our dis, division in SEDRA, we have a 250 cubic yard threshold when a grading permit's required. And, and so what happens many times is people come in to build a home, they're not disturbing more than 250 cubic yards. The grading is directly related to the home. And we need a way, my team needs a way of looking at slope and fill and tow and cuts and these type of things. So this is all it really does is help us provide a standard. It helps, it helps the designer and developer as well because they know what to measure against. And so that's what we're asking for in Appendix C and J. You know, the most notable item is really what the state's mandating upon us, and you're probably all familiar with that. If you haven't heard, right, as we know, many years ago, the governor implemented a goal of reaching net zero energy by, or electric, excuse me, by 2020. And here we are, believe it or not, 2020 is just around the corner for us. And so with this adoption of the 2019 code, so too does the state mandate upon us the requirement for solar on residential homes as they come in. So every new home coming in, coming forward will be required to have a solar system on those. I think, as I described to you in here, it's really a matter of a scientific process about credits, if you will. Before, we used to get a lot of credits to meet the energy by adding insulation, doing certain things like radiant barriers on our roof decking, by glazing our windows in certain ways with shading coefficients, by doing a lot of different items. And those are all gone now. We've taken advantage of all the credits, and there's really no way to get a home to net zero unless we do the type of things that you're seeing now. So there are some items where I just want your board to be aware, this generally increases the cost of about $9,000 on average per home and recognize that can, that can obviously be a lot larger. I, I myself have a solar system. Mine cost me somewhere in the neighborhood of $45,000 because it's a bigger system. And so this is just on average. And they're saying today that that 9,000 average cost, they do expect that to push about 500,000 new buyers out of the market. They think that's just going to be a significant cost that folks can't come up with a down payment and so forth. There are alternatives, and we expect to see some of this, which is the builders might be offering as an option to get the energy compliance as a lease option for their solar rather than the owner having to buy it. So they don't have to carry that upfront cost, and they can do that through a lease arrangement. And then if your board's not aware, about two weeks ago, the California Energy Commission actually postponed a decision which was to consider really what I can call off-site community, what do they term that, community?
Aggregation.
Yes, solar collection. And then that community could offset that. So each home wouldn't have it, but they would have a solar farm offsite that would then offset that. But the Energy Commission, as of two weeks ago, has postponed that decision. So we can't consider that at my level now as being an alternative to that. So other than that, I don't have much more for you today. It's just our typical code adoption process with our amendments that the communities come to expect based on, on our topography, geology, and, and climate. So with that, glad to answer any questions.
So just to clarify a couple of things. First of all, only applies to new construction, pure new construction as opposed to residential retrofit?
That's the way I've understood it. Now, if that meets a, what we call a new build, if they tear it down entirely by our program, then I, then we would have it comply with a new build as we would today.
Okay. All new construction to include what is being talked about now in terms of secondary dwelling units and all the rest?
Yes.
So, and anything? And obviously, this only applies to those, this action that we are taking, I don't mean the entirety of the, the building codes, but this action that we are taking only applies to those permits pulled in the unincorporated area. Separate actions by the local jurisdictions will be required in order for these to, to take effect in, within the incorporated cities.
Correct. Chairman Yuler, the incorporated cities have their own code development process they have to go through as well. I mean, the state does mandate these codes on them, so they should take no action. Really, what happens is our local amendments don't go into place, but this will too go into effect. But you're correct, this is only, I'm talking specifically about unincorporated Placer County today and how that might, how that might lay out.
So while I am very philosophically adamantly opposed to the state taking the steps that they've taken, which have artificially increased the cost of homeownership, I will say that in spite of the good job that we have done within the Pioneer Community Energy area of keeping the rates lower, it really, when you are, with the exception, I will say, of, of Roseville Electric, which I have the pleasure of representing in part of my district, if you are building in the unincorporated area, whether you are Liberty or, or Pioneer, the cost of incorporating solar photovoltaics into new construction has gotten so inexpensive that your operating cost is actually less, even though it does raise the bar for the acquisition in the first place by adding those costs into the construction, thereby making it a higher price point, thereby making it tougher to qualify. If you're able to qualify, having the solar photovoltaics included in the construction actually overall reduces your annual cost of homeownership fairly substantially. And so while I'm very much opposed to government taking this kind of pistol-to-the-forehead approach of making people embrace what would otherwise be a good market decision, it really is a good market decision for people to actually go ahead and incorporate that technology. So, well, like I said, I don't appreciate the method. I, I do agree with the result. Supervisor Gore, did you have something? You were always on a moment ago.
Well, it was, and I just have a question, just because I'm used to representing a suburban area. And as we think about areas up in the mountains, up in the Tahoe region, you know, it, it dawned on me how this ends up costing new builders in the Tahoe region where you don't have a whole lot of sun when you've got a whole lot.
Yes, we do.
Well, you have sun, but do you have enough sun to actually?
You're absolutely right.
We have lots of sunny days.
But, but her point is, her point is completely valid, and we.
Right, and you've got trees that canopy.
Yeah, the tree canopy in the foothill area. And yet, we won't let people cut down their oak trees. And in the TRPA area, you can't cut down your beautiful tall pines. And so we're going to make you put up a bunch of solar. It's going to be shaded for most of the time, but by God, you're going to put it up.
Well, actually, if I might Supervisor Gore, there are exceptions. So if there are existing tall buildings, if there are existing trees, if we have topography such as we might in Squaw where we have mountains that are standing tall right next to buildings, as we do in a lot of our, in our Tahoe region, we can take those into consideration. So they can do a study, they can show us what that, what those coefficients look like, and then we can take that into consideration. I can't remember the ratio, but there's a specific ratio about how much they must be able to receive in order for it to still be a viable system. So there is some consideration.
So the county can actually make an exception for some of these solar?
Yes.
Requirements for those homes that?
There's just no viable.
Don't get enough solar to actually have it be at all cost efficient.
Absolutely, yes. And we are, we are building those into, into place. And as well, if I can, I'd like to comment on the generator comment during the public session as well. Completely heard. As a matter of fact, I don't remember which supervisor brought that forward, but somebody has brought that forward already. We're drafting that now. I'm in the middle of my staff report. You should see that before long about recommending to your board about waiving a fee or reducing a fee for generators. Where also, I've directed my staff to develop a one-sheet template, if you will, application template. I said, let's not have everybody guess when they come in here about what that switch should look like or what this wiring system should look like. We know, we know what an approved system looks like. Let's develop an application. They just fill in the blank basically. So they're giving us the details of that. So we can, A, reduce our turnaround times at our counter. And then if we can bring this reduced cost, then we can streamline that. And I will tell you, we are seeing two, and I hate to say this sometimes, three hours of wait at my, over the counter because of these type of impacts. People are coming in just spontaneously to try to obtain these, not going through our online systems or, you know, applying through, it's our natural system. They're trying to get these quickly. And so that is backlogging us. And so we have recognized that and are taking steps to smooth that out.
Thank you. And a follow-up on that, can I just ask that we make sure those links get onto the Ready Placer website as well?
Sure.
So as folks are actually addressing the PSPS and they see there's information about generators, this is how we go about making sure you have safe generators in your home. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Gostis.
I, I just want to thank the department and Todd. I brought it to Todd's attention because this gentleman and others were at a coffee last week or a meet and greet last week and raised this issue. And we heard from Chief Estes yesterday at the Fire AdHoc that up in Nevada County, there were seven fires, structured fires that were pinned to improper generator installations. We don't want to see people doing this because of the fees involved and the time. We want to make sure they get them done appropriately.
Understood.
Sorry for the work burden, you know?
That's what we're here for.
A lot of things that we're reacting to are not our doing.
That's what SEDRA's used to, so we'll keep.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You bet.
So I did want to follow up on the, the photovoltaic exemptions based on site constraints. Do, is that codified anywhere? Is there an actual percentage that says that if you're not able to achieve this percentage efficiency out of your normal operation, your system, then you don't have to do it?
So that's the way I've understood it. I took a, a conference last springtime or attended a conference last springtime. And during that conference, the energy consultant described this credit item as well as these barriers that we might have, because I raised that specifically. I have regions in Tahoe that might have tall trees or mountains or other things around. And they said, absolutely. And then they weren't sure exactly in the code, you know, we didn't get our copy of our code until recently. So I'm not, I can't answer that fully, but from what I remember.
The other big challenge is, of course, multifamily housing.
Yes, multifamily housing considered as well. Three stories or less, multifamily housing, single-family housing, secondary dwelling units, and so forth is what's considered in this.
Yeah. Considered meaning?
Meaning they're mandatory. Solars would be mandated, yes.
So again, the biggest problem with the multifamily housing is you have one, typically one roof shared by multiple residences.
Right.
And you just don't get enough generation capacity out of the square footage of the roof. And so you're moving on to carports and things like that in order to try to get their generating capacity, all of which we're putting on product that we're hoping we help meet an affordability standard in our county by making them build elevated carports in order to support solar arrays.
Understood. So we have rooftops, we have solar canopies, we have ground mount solutions as well, so they can use some of their open space to offset. And maybe through all three of those, they could achieve compliance.
Okey dokey. Done, done shooting the messenger.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, any members of, I, I don't see any other board member lights. So any members of the public here in Auburn want to address the board on this item? And seeing none, is there anybody in Tahoe? All right, I don't see any. There were the two appendices referenced, C and J. The action that is being requested of us is to introduce the ordinance and waive the reading, repealing the existing code, Chapter 15, 15.04, and then adopting the 2019 standards. There's the reference to the appendices. Karen, and I see you glancing quickly, is there an additional action? Because I don't see that specifically articulated in what we're being asked to do right here. Is that incorporated within? Or do you want to separate?
You know, it doesn't appear that it's referenced in the ordinance. I'm looking at Tim as to whether it is included somewhere else.
It's within the body of the ordinance that we did that?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just as we do with the other amendments, we add within the body of the ordinance.
Okay. All right. So if we simply entertain a motion on Item 6A1, A, B, and C, then we got it all captured. Wonderful. What's the pleasure of the board? Thank you. We have a motion, homes, the second Gostis, send all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Health and Human Services accepting a, accepting deed restrictions on properties for housing assistance.
So good morning Chair Yuler, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. Today, I am requesting that your board introduce an uncodified ordinance authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to accept deed restrictions concerning properties limited for housing assistance purposes and waive the oral reading. So as a bit of background, your board has previously approved our department to contract with providers to provide housing assistance to seriously mentally ill individuals and homeless individuals. Most recently in October, your board approved the award of contracts with both the Gathering Inn and AMI Housing. Inn and AMI Housing to purchase and operate permanent supportive housing. Under this model, the county funds the purchase of such properties for these providers to both own and manage, subject to a 55-year deed restriction to preserve the use of these properties for mentally ill and homeless populations. The purchase of such properties currently requires a 21-day public notice period, which at best can delay the purchase, and at worst preclude the purchase due to competing and more timely offers. The proposed ordinance would allow the Director of Health and Human Services to accept a deed restriction for properties valued up to $750,000, obviating the need for a 21-day public notice period, which would allow the department to purchase the properties in a more expeditious manner and thus be more competitive in the market. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Or members have any questions on what's being requested? I don't see.
I have a.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Gore.
So, these homes, Jeff, would be homes that could house no more than six people, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so these would still be homes that, under state law, an operator could operate without getting approval from a local jurisdiction, correct?
Absolutely correct.
I think that that's, I want to clarify that, because there would be concern in a neighborhood, right, if a home was like this brought forward, right? But at the same time, we, we have these homes in our cities where people can have abort and care with six homes, they can, or six rooms, or six.
Six beds.
Beds. Substance abuse, recovery homes, there are a number of those types of homes in communities, and they don't require approval by a local jurisdiction.
That's correct, and I have to add that we have a number of these homes that are being operated by AMI Housing, and, and they've been very, very successful, and very well accepted in each of the neighborhoods where they're located.
And they are in our unincorporated areas as well.
They, they are.
Yes.
Okay. And it makes sense to me that when you're actually having to purchase a home on the open market, if somebody, if we have 21-day notice, then you've got the challenge of the price getting bumped up, or someone outbidding the county, et cetera, correct?
We recently had a bid on a home in, in Kings Beach, and we, we lost the home during that period, so we're trying to find better ways to be more competitive in acquiring these properties.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes.
Oh, I just want to follow up on Supervisor Gore's comment. I've visited several of the AMI Housing, you, a lot of, many times, you wouldn't even know that it was there, it was just in a good neighborhood, and they're very well managed, very well monitored, and the residents are very pleased that they actually have some shelter and some kind of stability in their lives, right? And it's very, it lessens the amount of homelessness that we have, so I, I'm full support of this.
Thank you. All right, thank you Supervisor Holmes. At this time, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? Either here or in Auburn. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board on this ordinance, what, thank you. Okay, we have a motion, Holmes, second Gore, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. Moving on, Public Works Tree Mortality Removal Project, fire up the McCullas, here we go.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Alice Atherton, Associate Civil Engineer with the Department of Public Works. I'm here today requesting the board adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the purchasing manager or designee to execute an agreement with Joe Benigno Tree Service Incorporated of Gardenville, Nevada, to remove 282 dead and dying, or dying trees, and the amount of $486,982 funded by the Office of Emergency Services, and authorizing the purchasing manager to sign all required documents and authorize any required change orders in an amount not to exceed $36,849, consistent with the public contract code. So, this package is located on Forest Service land, and this is in the, all of it is in the Lake Tahoe Basin Management jurisdiction, which is the Lake Tahoe Basin, so just kind of the rim of, next to the lake. We received two bids and responses, and bid responses, and we're proposing to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The average price per tree is approximately $1,726, so the fiscal impact, so 75, 25 match, 75 to the state, 25 to the county, so that is just under $1,300 per tree for the county, or, excuse me, for the state, and the county is approximately $432 per tree, if my math is correct. Okay. So, this package again is in Tahoe, and like all things Tahoe, it's a little more expensive than the rest of the county, obviously for mobilization costs and lodging for the crews to remove the trees, and so it wasn't unexpected that the price per tree was a little bit higher. I did want to mention, just for general and tree mortality, we did get a letter from the Publix thanking us for removing a tree. In Public Works, we don't always get letters of thanking us doing things, but I just wanted to forward that information to the board, so there's one happy customer out there.
I need to frame that letter.
Should be, I know, I was, I forwarded it to, it's like so many people. But, you know, there are people, they don't have direct contact with us, so there probably may be like one other person who's happy with us, they just don't know how to get ahold of us to let us know happy, how happy they are.
How happy they are.
Anyway, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Gustafson.
Yeah, my question was, and thank you, and thank you on behalf of all the people who don't know how to reach us to thank you. Getting rid of these trees is important, but I, what is our timing on proceeding? We're headed into the winter season, and I'm just concerned that some of these are threats to infrastructure, especially when they're already dead, and we get into our winter storm cycles.
Okay, so, yeah, we'd love to get them out and, and going. One thing that hasn't come up in our discussions here at the board is that we have a hard time getting contractors betting on them. So, we went out to bid for, this is Bid Package 8, we had Bid Package 7. At the same time, we had no responsive bidders on Bid Package 7. What's going on? Well, we have, contractors are extremely busy, and they're extremely selective in what they want to bid on, and then what, what's going on is PG&E, they're soaking up a lot of the contractors before that, Caltrans was doing a lot of work. A year, about a year and a half ago, we added 10 more contractors to our qualified list because they were telling county, hey, we want to bid, we want to bid, we want to be on your qualified list, and we said, great, we opened it up, and what was going on there is that a lot, they were doing a lot of work for PG&E, and then PG&E wasn't able to pay the contractors, and so they were looking elsewhere, and now they're up and running again, and now these contractors are not interested in doing work for the county. We have 17 between the two qualified lists. I'm not sure if it's this package or the one before, we had, and I want to mention too, our procurement department is very aggressive in getting these contractors notified and interested in participating. Every package, they call them personally and invite them to come to the pre-construction meeting. We've had a package where eight of them said they'd come, four showed up, and then we got three bids. So, this particular one, we had two bids. So, it's this juggling, also, they said, well, we can't, we have so much work, how do we entice them to get them to bid? So, we had a 30-day working, 30 working days, which is more than sufficient in some of these packages, but they are scheduled out. So we moved that from 30 working days to 90 working days. Like, if you can't, that's four and a half months. If you can't get it now, how about in a couple months? You know, hey, we're willing to work?
Right.
And that doesn't include weather delays. So we anticipate that.
There's going to be weather delays, because the 90 days, I mean, we're going to potentially be in the peak of winter at that point in time.
Yeah, and then, so, and we tell them that, like, we will, and, and then also too, mobilization, if, if you're going to go up to Tahoe and you only have one day of work that week, we're not going to count that as a working day because it doesn't make sense fiscally, right? Also, if there's a little bit, it's, the one good thing about tree construct, tree removal, not bridge construction, but you can drop trees, if it's a little bit of rain, you can drop them. If there's a little bit of snow, you can pull them over the stone, and in some ways, that's beneficial because it's less.
Right.
Disturbing to the soil. So that doesn't necessarily preclude them with the weather, but it may. Last year, we had a package out, and there was, you know, eight, 10 feet of snow, they just couldn't get to the trees. We had them remove what they could, they came back and removed them after the melt, but the, the thing is here, and I just was speaking with the CalOES, who is the, the grant we're going through, the CDA grant with them, last week, like, is it looking like you're going to cancel this, you know, had a, give a closure to this declared emergency, which means a closure on that money? And he said, there's no, there's no discussion about it, I think they kind of forgot about, which is probably good, and so just keep removing those trees, kind of thing. But if I, my goal, you know, and I wanted to get everybody, everything removed before winter hit, but it doesn't look that way, at least get everybody under contract, all these trees, because all of the divisions have been, or in this swipe, have been covered as far as putting together bid package, but we're not under contract for all of these different divisions. So that's the goal, to get under contract before winter's up, when they can get out there, they can get out there, but basically by spring and summer, we, we would have a complete swath. Now, that would, in the future's going to prompt the question, is the board wish for us to open up the process again and do another kind of blanket sweep of the whole county for these trees, you know, if the funding is available? But that's, we're not at that point right now.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate how much work goes into trying to get people to bid on these projects, and that we need to be flexible in the time. I just want to see the trees get down, and, in a safe manner, instead of by accident.
Safety first, we tell them that, safety first, we're never going to say, no, you have to go remove that tree.
No, no, but I was thinking more of. Come down on their own with heavy wet snow on them, if they're already dead and weakened, so just making sure we get them out as soon as we can.
So the good news there, and I've learned a few things about trees, if they're dead, dead, and, you know, there's a big difference between most of the way dead and all the way dead, right?
They don't hold the snow.
They don't hold the snow, yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. We've identified two, I'm, I'm just curious as to how this all comes together. First of all, you said it's a combination of state and county funding.
Correct.
Three-quarter state, one-quarter county.
Correct.
We're removing 282 trees on U.S. forest property. How come the feds aren't paying any of this?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay.
It gets worse, too, actually. Because.
Continuing with my theme of shooting the messenger.
I know, no, shoot away, shoot away, no.
All right, we don't have an answer.
I want, no, I want to fire back, but, no, it's true, so.
Because we have a huge amount of U.S. forest in Plaster County, and why is, why is the state and the county having to pay to maintain U.S. forest lands? I, I'm.
No, I've asked that many, many times, honestly, why, like, why are we partnering? Right, and we are partnering, but it's just, these are the funds, and you have to look at it from a hazard, safety, project perspective. So, if, let's say this tree thing wasn't going on, and a tree fell, who in actuality is going to go clean up that road? It's our road crew, that's who's going to go and get it and make sure it's safe, right? So it's just kind of an extension of that, but now, who's going to pay for it? 75% is the state and the county. They would like to participate, they don't have the, the funds of ability, but because of the declared emergency, there's a little bit of money to handle these trees that, you know, eventually are going to fall anyway, if we don't get them.
So, so when we, when we set up something like this, before we issue the RFP, do we go out, who goes out, tags trees, counsels, says, this is how many we want removed in this geographic area, who does that?
Our consultant.
Okay.
So, you may have noticed on the consent agenda, the $302,000.
So that's.
That's consultant fees, so the people who document these trees was them, they go out, so a forester and arborist under the direction of a registered professional forester, they said, this tree, not only is it dead or dying, with the requirements of dying, which is like 50% crown, or, or greater crown death, it also didn't die before the declared emergency of October 15th. So there's all this criteria, right? And then, so there's that, but then there's also the part of getting the right-of-entry forms to enter onto private property to, to actually mark the tree and say it wants to fall. And there's, there's concern, but I'm going to say we have about a 50% return rate from private property owners, but we've notified, we'd like to mark these trees, and they just don't respond.
So, when we're talking about the cost of tree removal, we're not all-inclusive. The $1,700 is, once it has been identified, once we have secured whatever permits that we need, or rights of entry we need, or whatever, so after we've paid the consultant to identify them, after we've gone through all this, that's when the $1,700 per tree kicks in. So our total cost per tree removed is probably double the $1,700 or close to, no, not quite that much?
I don't think so, I think it's going to be, if my estimations are correct, like, if you're, well, it's probably going to be 300 plus or minus a couple hundred per tree, because staff time is not reimbursed.
Right.
My time is not.
No, that's what I'm saying, our total cost.
Total cost, and then there's consulting costs, and then there's other, you know, we've had to pay, you're going to love this, we've had to pay, you know, a permit fee to go onto federal properties, so we're paying the feds, I know, I'd like that. It's, it's a hard meeting to sit in and say, you're going to charge us to mow your lawn? Okay. I mean, but do we believe in the value of the project? We do, because we have, we have responsibility for the safety of the roads.
I understand.
So, I know, it's not fun, and, but they understand that, I will say, local people, local Forest Service people that we're interacting with, and they, they do get it, but their hands are tied on what they can do.
Because the people sitting 2,700 miles away know better how to manage our forest.
They do.
Yes, of course.
And we better get on that, shouldn't we?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I'm done. Off my soapbox into my chair. I'm sorry, did I already ask for public comment on this?
No.
No? Is there anybody from the public, either in Tahoe or here in Auburn, wishes to address the board on this item prior to us acting on this? And seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board? Motion Gore, second gustus, and all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Transit Services.
Good morning, Will Garner, Public Works Department, and speaking of killing trees, we are asking for the approval of a contract this morning for our dialeride services. So. What am I pointing at?
There you go.
So our dialeride, just as a little backup, we have background, our dialeride service is a point-to-point service, I think I have a, it's a point-to-point reservation service that, where people call in, and they receive door-to-door, curb-to-curb service on the dialeride system. It is geographically, it, our service covers Lincoln, Rockland, Loomis, Taylor Road, Corridor, North Auburn, and Auburn area. So it's, it's a fairly large area, 94 square miles with eight buses at, at the most at any one time. Our dialeride service covers our required ADA paratransit requirements, which says that if you have a fixed route bus service, you have to have a paratransit service three-quarters of mile around each fixed route to provide equivalent service for folks who can't get to the bus stops, basically. So, our contractor since 2013 has been MV Transportation, and we have recently extended their contract a couple of months to allow us time to get this contract in place and to negotiate some of the fine points. Plaster County Procurement held a joint, or led a joint RFP process, along with Western Plaster County Transportation Services Agency, Health Express Service. WPCTSA actually awarded their contract last month for the Health Express operation to MV Transportation. Despite all of the, despite reaching out to all of the likely interested contractors in the nation, basically, that, that might be interested in operating the service, we received one proposal from MV Transportation, our incumbent contractor, and we had a, we assembled a panel of people from Rockland, staff members from Rockland, Lincoln, seniors first, WPCTSA, and Plaster County. We reviewed the proposal and recommended it was adequate and, and scored well enough to move on and award, recommend awarding a contract to them. Biggest issue in this particular proposal is the cost, and only so in that it, it compares to our existing cost in being 50% higher than, than we're currently paying. But, the reason for that is we're paying. than we're currently paying. But the reason for that is we're paying right now in a contract that's well below market cost. In 2013, when we awarded the contract to MV Transportation, they were twenty-seven percent lower than the incumbent contractor at that time, which was Pride Industries. And the reason for that is because they held several other contracts in the area and in Northern California, where basically they didn't charge us any overhead, really. It was just the straight, direct cost of operating the service. Well, things have changed, and now they're looking at us being the sole contractee, us and WPCTSA for the Health Express Service. So they're having to charge one hundred percent all of their overhead costs to us. Still, we wanted to take a look and see how reasonable this cost was, because for me, I'm kind of used to paying the lower market rate cost for the last six years. And so we took a look around and we looked at some relevant operations at transit, public transit operations that have services like this that are contracted to contractors and not operated by their own staff. And that was the City of Roseville, Yuba Sutter Transit, Yolo Transit District, and the town of Truckee. I'll get back to that. So in, in those cost comparisons, what we know here is that in our contract, we're asking the contractor to actually buy the fuel, so that's an added expense, not the county buying the fuel. All of these other contracts, and it's more common, really, the agency buys the fuel and provides it to the contractor to run the buses. In this case, because of the dispersed area, we're asking the contractor to buy the fuel. Also, in all four of these cases in my comparison, they, the agency provides the facility for the operation. We're not doing that in this case. We're a little bit crowded where we are, and so it's better to have the, one of the reasons, actually, that we contract this out. And, and so when you, when you modify the costs that we have and compare it to the same kind of costs, what we're finding is that we're right in line, almost the same as, even slightly lower than these compared, comparative costs for the same kind or very similar services. This, this chart is comparing us against the two that had the maintenance costs done by the contractor or the maintenance done by the contractor, and this one is where the maintenance is done by the agency and not the contractor. So it verifies that, or validates for us that the costs, even though much higher than our current, are definitely what we should expect to pay for this kind of service. So, and I want to go back to the one slide. One thing that MV is proposing here, and they're already actually working on this, is they're proposing this lease of a new space in Loomis, which is very central to our operation. Currently, and for the last six years with us, they've been operating out of two locations. They maintain the buses in Rancho Cordova and the bus drivers reported to Roseville. And that actually adds a lot of miles to our buses and a lot of, we interact a lot, so it's a lot of extra time for us to coordinate with them at these two locations. So this, this would be a nice advantage to have it right in the middle of Plaster County, Western Plaster County forests. So this service, because of the location of it, is funded through our partner cities, that being Lumis, Lincoln, Rockland, and then also by Plaster County, because it operates in a lot of unincorporated area. So what we are recommending today is, is three actions. One is to authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute this agreement 001235 with MV Transportation for provision of Plaster County dial-a-ride or transit service for a five-year period in the amounts noted in the staff report for each of the five years. Second is to authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to approve change orders up to five percent in each year. And third is to approve a budget revision, which we need for the current fiscal year, in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, three hundred in, for our professional and special services, and increasing revenue by one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two sixty from our city partners. So those are the three requested actions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members have any questions? Supervisor Gore?
Just one quick question, Will. Is Health Express still partially funded by the healthcare systems, or has that gone away?
No, it is. It is still partially funded by that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Gusterson?
Can you put up the map of the service area again, the first slide, or the second slide? Yeah. So if I wanted to call you for ongoing services to get to the domes from Tahoe, I'd have to drive to where? I, I'm kidding.
All the way to the domes.
Thank you for laughing. He was stunned.
That's why you get.
I was doing a dial-a-ride program from, anyway.
It wouldn't work real well.
I, I did have a serious question. Yes, I do need a driver.
We have a train. You can get on in Truckee.
Yeah.
Bring your ride up over.
How many rides a year are you delivering?
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred is the average for the last.
Right. That was in your presentation, and I missed that. Thank you.
Actually, I don't think it was. I think, I left it out accidentally.
Okay. Well, I was looking at the staff report. It wasn't.
Okay.
Thirty-seven thousand. Thank you.
All right. No other questions. Members of the public either here in Auburn. And seeing none, let's take B one and two, both authorizations in one motion, please.
Second.
Motion Holmes and Second Gusterson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. And now the budget revision. Motion Holmes, Second Gusterson, roll call, please.
Gore, Holmes, Gusterson, Euler.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on up to our Tahoe item, so that Supervisor Gusterson can get here to the domes. We have to make a change in our Tahoe service, I guess.
Good morning again, Will Garner. So you may remember, last month, Jennifer Merchant and I presented an item and received direction from your board to proceed with the implementation of free fares for TART, Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit, for a two-year period. And so this morning, I'm in front of you to recommend that we make the approvals necessary to move forward with that. When we presented that in October, we said January first as the starting date, but we're actually moving that, we'd like to move that to December twelfth, which is the first day of our extended TART service for winter time. So I'd like to have those coincide and be at the same time. We're kind of getting ready to do this, just in case your board approves this, this morning. So on the numbers part of this, our average fare revenue for the past three years has been four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Hundred and twenty-five thousand of that has been paid for by our large resort partners that pay for the bus passes of their employees. And that is intended to, to continue, and we're working on individual agreements with each ski oper, or yes, resort operator. And they're very supportive of, of the idea of, of doing that, that way. The town of Truckee is, has approached us, and they've proposed to pay us twenty-one thousand dollars, which covers free boardings within town limits on our regional TART service. Fifty thousand dollars is actually already paid through the TOT funds for our, to cover our free night service. And so that leaves two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be covered. And so that's what the, a two-year allocation of five hundred thousand dollars in TOT funds would cover, assuming some growth in ridership and keeping the amount per boarding steady as, as we do that. However, in the meantime, we're also engaged with the Tahoe Truckee Airport District, who really likes this idea. And we, we spoke to their board earlier this month and presented the idea, and they were favorable, and they have asked us to come back to their December board meeting when they approved their budget, which is a calendar year budget, to include participation by them of about half of that, two hundred and twenty thousand, for them to, to help pay for the free fares. Also, we're asking them to participate in a two-year program as well. So I can't stand here today and say that that would be done, but we are going to recommend that or propose that to their board. So a couple of things real quick. The marketing is, is obviously a very important item, and there's a couple of things. Most directly, we're, we're putting, we're getting ready to put it on our printed materials, which need to print very soon for this upcoming winter and splashing free all over that. That should get attention. Also, to place some, some wraps on our, the windows of our buses that say free. We're getting that work sort of ready to go and printed. Also, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, through their contractor consultant, is working on a marketing, more of a broader marketing campaign that would reach out to visitors. So those that don't actually see our buses or our schedules would actually hear that our service is going to be free. And also, they are coordinating with our resorts to get the word out, in the way they get the word out to people as well. And so then finally, I, also taking note of some comment from last time, we will certainly be sure to, to use this implementation of free fares to receive credit and recognition for reducing VMT and, and helping traffic for achieving all of our goals that we have in North Lake Tahoe. So with that, we also have a, I think four recommendations. I'll read them very quickly. Approve the implementation of free fares on Plaster County's Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit for a two-year period beginning on December twelfth, 2019. Number two, approve an allocation of up to five hundred thousand in Plaster County transient occupancy tax to reimburse TART for the implementation for free fares during the same two-year period. Number three, approve a budget revision in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand in this current fiscal year, 2019-20, from the Tourism and Promotions Fund to reimburse TART. And then four, authorize the Department of Public Works to initiate agreements with various funding partners to assist with TART free fares and reduce the amount of TOT paid to reimburse TART. And I'll make a quick note, those, many of those agreements would have to come back before the board because of the dollar amounts.
All right. Questions by board members?
I can't help myself.
Go ahead.
It's more of a suggestion or question. Have we ever approached, or could we potentially approach Caltrans about using the CMS signs on busy weekends to say there's free transit available as people sit in those long jams of vehicles? No matter what we've put on the bus, if the bus isn't driving by and they don't know, and, you know, I think the more we could.
We know exactly who to talk to about that.
Right.
We'll make the suggestion. I know they're pretty picky about what they put on those signs.
I know, but I see other messaging sometimes, and I think, you know, here's something that will reduce traffic on their state highway. So if they could help us, I think, at least on this trail period for the holidays and the peak weekends, it would be huge to let visitors know it's available. That's just a suggestion.
All right. Supervisor Gore?
And just a quick education for me, Will. The Tahoe Truckee Airport District, the reason they would participate in this fare recovery would be why?
Okay, well, they, they collect property tax all throughout eastern Plaster County, and they, besides running an airport, they are also very interested in just general benefit, in particular for transportation things, but for other things as well, throughout the whole North Tahoe area. So they're, they're really way more than just operating that fantastic airport they have.
Well, I'm thinking that if somebody flies into the airport, then they need to get to wherever else it is they're going, to the slopes or their resorts or their homes.
And our routes do go into the airport property all day long.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
All right. If there are no other questions by board members, any members of the public either in Auburn or Tahoe want to address this item? I'm seeing somebody stepping forward in Tahoe. Good morning.
Good, good morning. My name is Jamie Wright, and I am the Executive Director for the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. I am here today to speak in favor of implementing the free fares here within the Tahoe Truckee Area Regional Transit System. And I think we heard a lot of community support at the last board meeting, so glad to see this on the agenda. Hope that we can implement it this winter, because I think this will ultimately create, be the start of creating a culture change here in our region. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Was there anybody here in Auburn? And seeing none, we will go ahead and move forward. We're being asked to approve the implementation of the free fares and allocate the five hundred thousand dollars in support of that, and also authorize the Department of Public Works to have conversations with other folks that might be interested in participating. Those are items one, two, and four. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Gusterson, Second Gore, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. And on the budget revision of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what's the pleasure of the board?
Approval. Second.
Motion Gusterson, Second Gore, roll call, please.
Gore, Holmes, Gusterson, Euler.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're giving away bus passes and buying cars. That makes sense?
Let's do that now.
More supervisor?
Did I say I was done editorializing today? Because I, I lied if I, if I said, I lied. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
No worries. My name is Brett Wood. I'm your purchasing manager. I'm here today with two requested actions of your board. The first is to approve negotiated purchase orders with multiple firms in the aggregate amount of nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, based on State of California Cooperative Contracts for the purchase of fleet vehicles. These are funded through revenue collected from replacement funds within the county, and there's no additional net county cost for those actions. In addition, I'm also asking for your board's approval to purchase additional vehicles as they have been authorized and approved and placed on the master fixed asset list throughout the year, which allows us to expedite the replacement of county vehicles as they come up. As a matter of background for your board, we, your board approved the master fixed asset list in September of this year, and at that time, procurement and the Department of Public Works Fleet Services Division met together, Fleet Services entered their requisitions for new vehicles, and we determined that in evaluating the State of California Cooperative Contracts, as compared to our contracts, it was more cost-effective to utilize those cooperative contracts this year, hence this request. In addition, we looked at trying to find ways to make sure that we could expedite the replacement of vehicles throughout the year, which is the reason for the second request. With that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members have any questions? I don't see any folks in Tahoe or Auburn. I don't see any. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Approval.
Motion Holmes, Second Gore, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We, at this time, are going to briefly adjourn as Plaster County Board of Supervisors in order to convene as the Plaster County Successor Agency. We have one item before us, and I believe we are being requested to have that item just continue to.
That's, that's correct, Chair. What we would like to do, we have some additional discussion we'd like to have regarding this purchase and sale agreement. So we'd like to bring this back at a future board date, once we have actually spoke a little more with our facilities group and, and the buyer itself.
Okay. Any members of the successor agency have any questions or comments prior to us simply taking this item and punting it to a future conversation? Seeing none, we will take this item and punt it to a future conversation. When staff is good and ready to bring it back, please feel free to do so. At this time, we will adjourn as Plaster County Successor Agency, reconvene as Plaster County Board of Supervisors, in order to head into our closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider four items of existing litigation.
Thank you. Can I estimate on how long?
Fifteen minutes.
Oh, fifteen minutes. We'll be back. All right.
We're going to pay for it. Ready? The board meant in closed session to consider four items of existing litigation. On County versus Sipert, the board heard a report and authorized filing of litigation. On Gademie versus Lang, the board heard a report and authorized defense of the defendant. On Tahoe Residents United for Safe Transit, the board heard a report and provided direction regarding conflict waivers.